Meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God and is the liberty of justice.
The motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the December 12, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Will be seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimously. Public forum? Call up Mr. Gergie to the podium, speak about pedagogy. Mr. Gergie, you have three minutes.
I got a little curious when last board meeting, a request for textbooks purchases. I'm just, I was curious about the fact, I take it that you're trying, you want to replace textbooks with Chromebooks, you know, computer instruments. I was wondering, can the students take those home with them? I mean, I'm thinking that, I'm a little obsessed with the fact that I feel that I have throughout my life mainly instructed myself when I read and studied on my own, out of a textbook or whatever book was available. And I was wondering if the students, I mean, do the students have suitable pedagogical materials at home? I mean, are they allowed to bring those things home with them, these Chromebooks? And I would think that if they are being deprived of outside of class materials, that would be, well, you know, I would consider it practical. I think education is primarily the teacher having a catalytic effect on a broader temporal space. I think the study time to classroom time should be, you know, between five and 10:00 to 1:00, actually, I believe. Well, so I guess I'm out to inquire after the goings-ons in that regard. Are they allowed to take those instruments at home, or should they be acquiring, you know, you know, book materials?
I'd like to respond to you at the end of your presentation. Are you concluded? Are you done?
I guess I would like to hear your response and further discussion of the situation.
Thanks. We stand right there, we'll give you a response. Stand right there, remain there, we'll give you a response.
So currently, we do have students that do have Chromebooks, and they, at this point, do not take them home, but there are other instructional materials that they do take home. There are software materials that they can access from home on the computer. We are looking at continuing our rollout of Chromebooks throughout the school next year, and we're looking at a policy that's similar to other schools where students would be assigned a Chromebook in the high school, at the high school level, and have the Chromebooks to take home. We're looking at what the trends are in other schools with regard to the Chromebooks, and whether students get to take them home at the middle school level or the elementary level. We'll be reporting back to the board on the Chromebooks themselves during the budget season, when we're budgeting to roll out another couple of grade levels. But currently, they do not take the Chromebooks home. And I will tell you at the conclusion of Mrs. Urbina's presentation tonight, you will be addressing materials specifically in social studies and science that came up as questions from the last board meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gergie. No other names on a public forum, we will move forward our presentations this evening. We apologize for the late start, there were some issues that needed to be addressed, and it kept the board with our counsel a little bit later than anticipated. That in mind, we call up Dr. Chuck Corey from Ulster Boses District Superintendent with a Boses update. Dr. Corey?
Thank you, thank you for inviting me, and Happy New Year to everybody. Before I get started, I do want to introduce my new Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Jonah Schanker, who joined me here this evening. Dr. Schanker was formerly the Principal of our Path, P-Tech Academy, and, you know, he's now transitioned over to the central office, so we're thrilled to have him join our team. At each of your places, I left some information that I'm just going to briefly go over. I always start off with the student information, where Ellenville students are in our programs. The, obviously, most of you know that we run Career Tech programs, Special Education programs, and we have the Hudson Valley Pathways Academy. In addition, this year, we did open up our Phoenix Academy, or the Alternative School. As you can see from our Career Tech enrollments, you have 62 students from Ellenville presently attending the over 25 or 26 Career Tech programs. Of note for you all is that we do run a program currently at Ellenville Hospital, the Nurse Assisting Program, and you have 10 students enrolled in that. These are grade 10 and 11, excuse me, 11 and 12 programs, half-day programs, and so, you know, we're thrilled that that program that formerly ran only exclusively out of our New Pauls, not New Pauls, Kingston sites, the Kingston Hospital sites, we were able to get a partnership with Ellenville Hospital and work out like a satellite program from here. As you can see up in our Port U.N. Center, you have seven students in Cosmetology, and then a sprinkling of students in the variety of our other programs. So we're continued to be thrilled. I think I've mentioned every year, I'm always impressed with Ellenville students who come to our program because of the travel time it takes to get there. It's not an easy commute from Ellenville up to the Port U.N. site, and we, as Superintendent, your Superintendent knows, we continue to explore opportunities where we could offer things closer to home for students in the western part of the county. New Visions, which is a grade 12 program, it's kind of like an honors level program. You can see, we have four students from Ellenville in our New Visions Robotics Program. That's Advanced Manufacturing and Robotics together. We have 13 students from Ellenville in a variety of our Special Education programs. They're representing about, just a little less than 10% of our special ed population. We have three students in our new Alternative School, the Phoenix Academy. As you can see, that school reopened this year. It's a redesigned Alternative School program, it's a regular education program, not a special education program. And we closed that program a couple of years ago, and we promised that we would reopen it, kind of redesign it, and reopened it, and it opened up in September, and thrilled that Lisa and her staff have been able to support it by sending three students there. Presently, we don't have any students from Ellenville in the Pathways or Hudson Valley P-Tech Academy, and that's something that each district makes a decision whether or not they want to support that program as well. Overall, Ellenville has 84 students, a little over 7% of our total population, which is relatively equal to your percentage of students in the county. A little less than that, but very close, and so we're thrilled with the level of support that you all give us in terms of all of our programs. I'll turn to the financial piece, which is the landscape short page. What we try to do each year is to kind of show in a straight-line fashion what participation in a Boses program actually, how it translates into finances for the district. And because you get things like Boses aid and refund in the year following the year in which it's earned, we basically move those totals into the same year, so you can see the actual cost. And all you look at, of note for me, just looking at these numbers, in 2016, 17, in all of our COSAR programs, you did $6.4 million of participation. As of January 5, 2018, you're at 7.1 million. As you know, I think everyone knows that Boses budget's different than a component budget, change every month. As you need more services, your budget changes, and so we're thrilled, and also, the trend over time has been increasing dependence on Boses programs, and I think because you realize that there is, there's a benefit to doing that. Of those 6.4 million, 3.5 million of it is in the Special Ed, ELL, and Transportation. And so those are not eligible for Boses aid, because you receive aid directly from the state for those programs, so they're separate from Boses aid, leaving you $2.8 million, almost $2.9 million of program participation that's eligible for Boses aid. Your aid ratio is about 64.3%, which basically translated means that for every Boses aid-eligible dollar that you spend with us, you get 64 cents back from the state the following year. The Boses aid that was based on eligible COSAR participation is a little over $1 million. As you all know, that any money that's left in a COSAR at the end of the year has to be returned to a district based on their level of participation, and your refund was $730,000. So taken together, of that $2.8 million, almost $2.9 million, the net cost of that participation was just a little over $1 million. So, you know, when you subtract out the refund, and you subtract out the aid, you're getting basically just shy of $2.9 million worth of services for a little over $1 million in actual cost to the district. And I think that's probably part of the reason why you continue to look to Boses, because of the incentive of participating in Boses programs. The net cost of all Boses services, if you take that $1,670,000 and add to it the 3.5 million from Special Ed, Transportation, and ELL, you come up with the overall cost of 4.5 million. But we don't know how much aid you get in Special Ed and ELL, so you'd have to deduct that to get the real cost of those programs. We're thrilled, you continue to use our services, and we are thrilled for the continued support. And I know several of the board members have visited our programs, I always open that invitation up. We continue to grow our programs. If you want to visit our Alternative School, our Hudson Valleys Pathway Academy, or our Career Tech Center, or our Special Ed site, just let Superintendent Wiles know, and we'll make arrangements for it, just like we did last year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Corey. Does any board member want to be heard? John Burns?
Yes, thank you, Doctor. So, when you take out the reimbursements and then the return that we get after the money, can you give me a per aver, it's 84 students, right?
Yes.
Can you give me a per-student cost for services?
They're different. The per-student cost in Career Tech is just around $11,000 per student. Not all of that is aidable, the state does limit, the state does limit the amount of aid. So for instance, a teacher's salary is capped at $30,000 of a teacher's salary is aidable. Anything beyond $30,000 is not aidable. So about $11,000 per student. In our Special Ed programs, it varies based on the program. Some of these are 8-1-1, 6-1-1, 12-1-1, and each program has a separate tuition charge. Our P-Tech program, which you don't have any students in, is about 17,000. We run that program at 17,000 a student, but we do refund about 3,000 on an annual basis. We try to keep the cost at around 14,000, and then that 14,000 is aidable if you had students in P-Tech. Our Phoenix Academy, presently, we're charging $54,000 because of all of this per-student, because of all of the services, but if we hit a threshold, it's one of the, we typically set our tuition rates and keep them locked, but if we can get up to 15 to 20 students, I've told the superintendents, I'll lower the tuition to somewhere around $35,000.
My question was then, if we have 84 students, that cost to us after the reimbursements is $1 million?
It's not just the students, we also provide professional development, we also purchase equipment for you, but the total cost of that $6 million or $7 million worth was $1 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other board member want to be heard?
I usually come back, I know when you have your budget discussions, and I offer myself again to do that again. When you go through, I know Ellenville's one of the districts that goes through every line item, and I volunteer-
I think you're going to see that change, but we'll certainly-
But I will certainly come back to explain the specific line items in the Boses budget. I think that's helpful to everybody.
We look forward to that, Dr. Corey, and always, we thank you for the work that you continue to do with Boses and the Ulster County Boses throughout the region, and certainly our working relationship with you, and we really appreciate that, and we'd like to congratulate the new administrator over there, and congratulations, and welcome aboard, and we wish you well in the future. Thank you, Dr. Corey.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Late question.
Late question, yes, I apologize. Dr. Corey, how are you? Happy New Year.
Good, Happy New Year to you.
Good to see you, thank you for coming. I'd be interested to see what the, what the seats-filled numbers are this year compared to last year, and if we've seen an increase in enrollment here. Also, last year during the presentation, we had discussed, because of the geographic location of Ellenville as compared to the location of Boses in Port U.N., we had talked about the possibility of adding some Wi-Fi to the buses-
Buses, yes.
-as well as assigning some coursework to the students, so that we fill that 45- to 60-minute ride.
Absolutely.
Where do we stand on, I'd like to know where we stand on those, and-
Lisa and I talked about the Wi-Fi and buses, you contract buses, yeah, transportation.
Yeah, especially with the travel over to Kingston and to New Pauls. It's very difficult, more so to Port U.N., it's very difficult to provide the Wi-Fi in areas where you don't have continuous service. And it is also hard to have instructional time on a school bus without an instructor there. So we found, we ran into a few roadblocks with having something, you know, on the bus. Students are always encouraged to, they have their materials with them, and they also have, I think sometimes it's a nice way to decompress after going to the classes on the way back.
Okay. And I think your students, if, and take some of their academic courses at our campus in Port U.N. because of the travel time.
And because of the conflict-
Yes.
-of the travel time. And then with regard to the seats filled this year as opposed to next, I think we have a report like that, we'll put it in the next board packet.
I could certainly get you that information.
If you can, that would be great. And when we go through the budget, this is both to Mr. Bruce and Mr. Burns, who'll definitely see what COSARS we spend, what dollars in, but you can't take that money and just divide it by 84, because there's many other services.
Right.
Like we pay for services for having our asbestos-
Yeah, safety officer.
Safety officers, we have our public relations money in there, you know, the school tool, all of our, all of our student management systems. We purchase and contract those services through Boses to maximize the aid and get the money back, as opposed, as opposed to going directly to those companies. So we can get you a detailed report, and you'll see that when we budget also.
Yeah, thank you.
And one last question. I know that the costs differ from program to program, but we had also discussed satellite offerings here at Ellenville, and is there a number that has to be reached before that's possible? Like if we have an enrollment of 12 students who are interested in a particular program, would we, would Boses then-
The advantage for dealing with Boses, and I've said this before, whereas a component school district might have a number of 12 to offer a program, I need 12 from the entire county. So it might be two students from Ellenville, three students from Rondell Valley, five students from Antioa. I tend to look at the county east and west, people can look at it north-south. So if we did satellite programs, much like we have the health program at Ellenville Hospital, those students, had we not had that program, would, if they wanted to have that program, would have had to travel to our Port U.N. site and then go to the sites in Kingston Hospital. Because of the program here, we're able to do that, and they can avoid that long travel. We open that up to, so students from Rondell could avail themselves. Right now, nobody has, but they could. Likewise, we just opened a carpentry program in Rondell Valley. It right now has six students who are all from Rondell Valley in our carpentry program. If students from Ellenville wanted to take CTE Carpentry, half-day in the afternoon, they would just have to go to Rondell Valley. Likewise, and, you know, we could, we've always talked about this, if there was a room, I know, and we have talked about it specifically with Ellenville, if there was a room and there was a program interest, we talked about computers, or graphic design, or things like that, obviously, I couldn't move the auto shop, that's, you know, but-
Too expensive.
But a classroom with computers, we could do any one of our computer programs here in Ellenville. But I know-
We did create the CNA program down here this year.
Yes.
So that's a new program here.
Yes.
And then also, I think New Visions Health is back.
Yes.
I think here, one year we were off because our enrollment was so low-
Yes.
-in that particular program. So we're always talking about what we can do here. I know Mr. Pabon is a big advocate of trying to get as many programs down here as he, as he can.
Yeah, we just need, and there isn't a magic number, because if you gave me-
People in space.
-five students or three students from Ellenville, I then go out and look for students from neighboring high schools-
Right.
-who would shorten their commute by coming here for the program.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Corey.
Thank you, Dr. Corey, thank you for your presentation.
Great, thank you, thanks a lot.
We will now go on to a presentation on Super Kids with Mrs. Angela Urbina Medina and kindergarten teachers. I would like to say thank you on behalf of Board of Education for the teachers and staff that came out beyond your workday, we appreciate it, we'd love to hear from you and see where this is going. You guys coming up?
You come up?
I was going to invite them.
Don't fall.
Stand by.
You recognize, everybody knows who you are.
Really?
Thank you.
It is freezing in here. Still.
Oh, yeah.
Little disoriented by being in a different location.
I hope where you are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was asked a few weeks ago last year to provide you with an update on the Super Kids reading pilot, and that is what I will be undertaking this evening. But I am not going to have this conversation alone, as the board president already invited members of the presentation team up, I'm going to ask my colleagues here to introduce themselves, and then we will begin a conversation about where we are in Super Kids. The teachers will be joining in the conversation at different points, and hopefully, at the conclusion, you'll have a better idea of where we are in the program. There is a copy of the handout that's been shared with you, along with a piece of paper that you probably don't know what the purpose is, other than the fact that it looks delicious. So I'm going to invite the teachers up to introduce themselves.
Nancy Rosenstock.
Jeannie Kuhout.
Anne Jureg.
Teresa Roselli.
Eda Hannington.
Meredith Ness, hello, everyone.
And before I continue, I do want to say thank you to all of them for not just being here this evening and participating in this presentation, but also for being available to me, to provide me with insight on how the program is working. The teachers have been very flexible this year, not that they aren't in any other year, but this was an exceptional school year for a variety of different reasons. And adopting a new program in August is not the ideal in the minds of any educator as you're approaching the start of the school year. So it was a lot to absorb in a short period of time, and given that, I think that we're in good shape. So the Super Kids program is a program that has a very prescribed, in a way, process of getting students to learn how to read. It's a program that can begin in pre-K and go all the way through second grade. What it does is sort of unfold the world of reading and reading comprehension in a way that's based on what we know about how children learn and their brains. The students start with decodable text that is very controlled, and they work their way progressively to, in second grade, having uncontrolled text. There is an integration of different aspects of writing and reading, along with comprehension and phonics and decoding skills, that the students become familiar with, the routines over the course of a week, and in a day, the students can look forward to, with a level of predictability, how something is taught. The motivational piece, as you can see here in this little graphic, the clip art, those are the Super Kids characters. And as corny as it may sound, and as simple as they may appear, that's what really has gotten our kindergarten students connected with this program, that and other aspects of it, but the characters in the program really have incited in our students a level of interest that has them coming back for more. The students, as in any program, participate in assessments, and the assessments are progressive. The assessments begin very simply with phonics, phonemic awareness, and letter recognition, but as you move through the 24 units, the students by the end of kindergarten are being assessed not just on phonics and phonemic awareness, letter recognition, but also on comprehension and writing. Now, if we're thinking about where we were, and the reason why this was something that I found attractive, and we found attractive as a program for our school district, you know, these were, this is an area where we felt, and our data showed, that our students were not moving up into first and second grade with the foundation that they needed. And this program is really providing them with a solid base, a base that they have not had in previous years. So if you're looking at what the skill progression would be, and Unit 1 being early in the year, and Unit 24 being the last unit that the students participate in, you'll see the difference between what an early exam or assessment would look like, and what it is that the students are engaging in, and what's required of them as they move through the kindergarten grade level. The, the language that they're using, and how it is that they're responding to the text is a lot more sophisticated, the expectation on how the students are responding to comprehension questions, compare and contrast fiction and non-fiction texts, those are the same types of tasks that our third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students engage in when they're assessed on their New York State assessments. So to have our kindergarten students being able to respond to text in that way in kindergarten gives them practice that they had not had in the same manner in previous years. I touched base with Meredith. Meredith has, as a reading specialist, has been gathering a lot of data on the students' performance, and the assessments, and how they're faring, and the students have had the opportunity to engage in several assessments at this point in the program. At the start of the program, in September, there was a pre-assessment, which was basically a measure to test where the students were, a readiness assessment. And keep in mind that when you're assessing kindergarten students, that it takes a long time. Correct? It takes a long time, and you have to keep in mind that you're working with kids, these are little kids, and they get tired, and, you know, you have to be prepared for all kinds of things that might interrupt the flow. And the assessments are set up in a way that they're segmented, so you really can get through a portion of an exam without having to derail the whole process if the student has to get up and go to the bathroom. So if you're looking at a comparison of an- a lot of data on the students' performance and, um, the assessments and how they're faring. And the students have, um, had the opportunity to engage in several assessments at this point in the program. The, at the start of the program, in September, there was a pre-assessment, which was basically a measure to test where the students were, a readiness assessment. And keep in mind that when you're assessing kindergarten students, that it takes a long time.
Correct.
It takes a long time and you have to keep in mind that you're working with kids. These are little kids and they get tired. And, you know, you have to, um, be prepared for all kinds of things that might interrupt the flow. And the assessments are set up in a way that they're segmented. So you really can get through a portion of an exam without having to derail the whole process if the student has to get up and go to the bathroom. So if you're looking at a comparison of, um, an assessment, the first assessment to say the third assessment, out of 107 students that were tested, for assessment one, 96 students were scoring between 67 and 100%. So if we use 67 as being passing, um, we have about 90% of our students passing for, on their first assessment. Now, keep in mind, phonics, phonemic awareness, and, uh, for students, uh, for that first assessment, very, very narrow in terms of the scope of what it is that you're looking at. Assessment three, which was, uh, other data that was available, another unit exam, students, 107, 90 students performing still 67 to 100%, 84%, not too bad. When I, I had the opportunity, um, last week to, to meet with a couple of the kindergarten teachers that were available and a couple of teachers that weren't available, the teachers themselves had had, um, a, a chance to sit down and kind of debrief about the program, talking about what it was that was working for them and what their feedback was about the program overall. I'm not going to read to you what it is that you can see for yourselves, what you have in front of you and what's also on the screen, but one of the items that I know, um, has been significant in the, the lives of the kindergarten students, also for the teachers, and has, is unique for this particular program, is the ice cream paper. Could someone come up and talk about the ice cream paper? Come on, Nancy.
So the ice cream paper is a writing.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. The ice cream paper is, oh, yeah, I'm telling you.
I know.
The ice cream paper is a writing paper and it has a triple ice cream flavors. It has strawberry, vanilla, and chocolate. And then there's a cone. And then there's lines next to it that are strawberry, vanilla, and chocolate. And so we talk to them when we first start to write. So we're going to start on the strawberry line at the top, go through the vanilla line, and we're going to end at the chocolate line. And so the consistency of all six classrooms saying the same thing, the repetition of, "We're gonna start at the strawberry line." That's for capital letters. Go down through the vanilla line and end at the chocolate. It's, uh, the repetition is really good for them.
So something as simple as ice cream cones and flavors, vanilla, chocolate, and strawberry, has been significant. The, the consistency from classroom to classroom has also been a huge help to the students in, in kindergarten. Listening skills have increased, as mentioned, the daily routines. The students, um, and Anne, maybe you could speak to this because this was something that you shared with me, about students being anxious to take home their workbooks. Now, I know this is kindergarten and it's all novel and it's really very exciting, but let's linger on that for a second. They're anxious to take home their workbooks. Could you speak to that?
So for each of our Super Friend characters, the, the kids get a small workbook that we work in throughout. Um, it depends. It could be five days. It could be seven days. It could be nine days. We work in that workbook and then we send it home with them. And, um, they're very anxious to show on the back of the workbook, our pictures of the Super Friends, so they get to talk with their families about them. Um, there are some activities that we start in class that they can take home and then play with their parents at home. This time it was a tic-tac game that they, a tic-tac-toe game that they could play for the letter T. Um, so it involves their families as well. And I've had a lot of feedback from parents, um, saying that their, their kids have told them page by page what they did each day and what they learned. So they're excited about it.
And you told me you couldn't speak in public.
Could you repeat that?
So she'll never speak in public again.
Oh, no, okay. I had switched from... There is a, there is a video that I, I'd like to show you, but I can't, uh, because, I know, I'm, I'm gonna try and, okay, hold on. Yeah. Cause I, I switched from one Gmail account to the other just a few minutes ago and I didn't request access, but we do have the audio of it. So one of the, the things about the program that's, we've already mentioned, has to do with the fact that the students are really engaged. They're really invested in the characters. They're excited about the characters. They can't wait till a character is introduced. I'm hearing stories about kids trying to peek in at the books to see which character is going to be introduced next. Keep in mind that these characters are with them and they are intertwined all the way through second grade. Um, so this particular, um, young man who was a student in Mrs. Rosenstock's class, um, his mom shared the video with Mrs. Rosenstock and it was, um, her son who was immersed in, um, this video that he was looking at, which is a song about this particular character.
Yes, yes.
She doesn't have access to it.
And I can, I can come back to it. She's almost there. I'm gonna move on to the next slide. We'll save that. No, no worries. We'll save that for last. So moving forward, um, in thinking about, you know, do we want to keep this program? Is this a program that's working for us? My answer is absolutely yes. Okay, stand by. Absolutely yes. Yes, we wanna keep this program in kindergarten. In fact, we need to expand this program. We need to expand this program down and up. Of course, if the budget will allow. Um, the pre, there is a pre-K component, a pre-K curriculum that is a setup for the kindergarten grade level. Now, initially I thought that there wasn't a lot of substance there, but there is. There are foundational skills that, uh, from my conversations with the kindergarten teachers, the students do not, some are lacking and they would benefit from, uh, being provided in the pre-K level. Moving the students up from kindergarten to first grade, they're already invested in the Super Kids and their relationship with the characters is only going to get better. There is a strong technology component in this program where there is technologies that's used in your classroom every day?
Yes.
Every day. So one of the things that's been a struggle at times has been inadequate technology to meet those needs. Not having a, um, a smartboard or an area that can, um, the images can be projected on. Not having speakers that provide enough volume, um, that can carry across the room so that all students can hear. There are simple, simple, simple things that can only enhance, um, the way that this program is utilized and the way that our students receive it. Those are the minor material issues. When I was speaking with the kindergarten teachers last week, they asked about, "Can we get whiteboards that have the ice cream paper on it?" Yes, absolutely. If that's going to make it easier for you to work with your kids on handwriting, handwriting, which is, has been challenging, correct? And we've used other programs to teach handwriting in the past, but the kids are loving participating and using the ice cream paper and working on their handwriting skills. So if whiteboards are going to get us across the finish line, absolutely. The, there is a, a parental component that's part of the, um, online parent portal that some parents have not been able to fully utilize because they're, they have not, um, or are not really computer savvy or technology savvy. We talked about trying to arrange for an evening where, uh, we could provide them with kind of a walkthrough and a navigation of the parent portal portion of the Super Kids program. We ready for audio?
Yes.
Okay.
We save the best for last. You, you have to really see his face because he's just like.
Okay, I'm not doing this. You do it, Alan. Mr. Buck, okay.
Okay, I, I'm gonna let you guys look at my cellphone, cause it just doesn't. Yeah, he, he really is adorable. He's, he's, he's as adorable as those ice cream cones. So I apologize for the glitch in the technology on the video. Are there any questions that you have about the Super Kids program or how the Super Kids program is working in our kindergarten classrooms?
Wayne?
I just have one question. So there's six classes right now that it's being utilized in?
Yes, seven with, yes.
Okay. So you spoke about expanding the program, which I think is great, but in the past when we brought programs in and we've opened it up to several grades, there's been a lack of accountability maybe. Uh, so how, how are we gonna hold this program accountable when it's from pre-K through four, five, or whatever the pro, the plan is? You know, a couple of years ago, we spent a lot of money on a reading program and not everyone followed it. So.
Sure.
Who's gonna be accountable and who's gonna make sure that this is what's happening?
Sure, and that's an absolutely legitimate question. Um, when, when we had the opportunity and when there was discussion this year about, "Why don't we adopt, you know, K2?" I didn't feel as though that was something that we could manage. That, A, I was not familiar enough with the program to feel as though I could even articulate to somebody else what it was that you were looking for. So, um, this school year is our getting to know Super Kids year. And, um, Ms. Mataraza, the assistant principal in the middle, in the elementary school, has been very, very involved and been in the kindergarten classrooms on a regular basis. She's familiar with the program. We have two pre-K teachers who would be, uh, the facilitators of, of Super Kids pre-K if we were to adopt, uh, Super Kids in, in pre-K. And if we decided that we were going to roll up, then that would be inclusive of first and/or second grade. So we would have to have a conversation, a two-part conversation. One has to do with whether or not we can afford to do that. And two, whether or not we can support the program. What is, what is nice and, and hopefully I've, I've said that enough, there's a simplicity to this program that makes it a lot easier to manage than HM. There are, there are not a million components here. And things are woven in together in a way that makes it very logical. Through the work that has taken place in kindergarten this year, the kindergarten teachers have learned some tips and tricks that they're ready to turnkey to their colleagues in pre-K, first and second grade about things that they've learned and done that have made the use of the program easier for them this year. So, um, if it, if it is the decision that we're gonna move forward with the expansion of the program, then we would, we would discuss all of those options.
Thank you. Any other board number one to be heard? Jody?
Two questions. One is, um, how long does it take to get through a unit normally? And are we all on the same unit or almost? And the second part I have is, what support do we get from Super Kids on this? Do they come and observe us and give us any feedback? Is it just training separately or is it actually, do they come in the classroom, observe the teachers and then give us?
One of the nice things that I've seen, um, already with Super Kids is that there is a consistency in, in the Super Kids facilitators. Um, over the years that we've had, had and worked with HM, every single year, there's been somebody else that's been responsible for this particular region. No two years in a row have you worked with the same individual. Here in this area, Super Kids, um, is part of the Tri-Valley School District. They also use Super Kids in Monticello. And those trainers and the individuals that have worked in those school districts have been consistent. And that is something that, that has been shared with me from, um, those responsible for curriculum in, um, Monticello and also in Tri-Valley.
Robyn Collins?
I think some of you must have been talking to preschool teachers too, because I have a four-year-old that comes home with a folder and will not rest until I have sat down and gone through the folder. She's explained everything she's learned. And the writing may not be with ice cream, but, uh, the same principles seem to be working. So it's a joy just to see it's already working. And I think some of you must be talking and teaching your cohorts already. And that's a beautiful thing too, because it's all about all of us growing. So thank you so much for what you're contributing and we look forward to how high and far it can go.
John?
Um, Angela, I think, uh, a couple of things. Congratulations. One of the things, uh, that I got from this is that the, the figures themselves, the Super Kids are identifiable for the kids and that helps with the reading. The other thing that I think that's most important, whenever you talk about a, a new program, is teacher buy-in and it seems like we have that. So, um, that, that's a good thing to see.
If I can just pause on that for a second. To me, there, because of the way this rolled out, and I don't, I don't wanna spend too much time up here, that there was kind of a rush. And it wasn't the way that I would have liked to have done things, but it's the way that it happened. And there was some reluctance about, uh, this approach versus the approach that we've used previously. And there has been an authentic sort of process that's taken place, which to me is very, very valuable and respectable, because I've never been a kindergarten teacher. I have nothing but tremendous respect for those who are working in kindergarten classrooms. If you came to me when I was working as a sixth-grade teacher and said, "We're gonna scrap what you've been doing for the last 18 years. We're gonna do it this way," I would have a level of hesitation as well. So the process has been authentic and I do believe now, based on the results that the teachers are seeing, that they feel, and I don't wanna speak for you, um, that they feel good about the program.
Well, and, and I'd like to say that I would have been a much better student if my teachers talked in terms of strawberry, vanilla, and chocolate.
So a question for the teachers. Um, this program's been going on for about, uh, close to five months now. Have you seen, uh, what you would describe as, uh, a continued pattern of growth and success in this program as you go forward? Is this program, uh, compared to other programs you, you've, uh, had the opportunity to teach, has it been more valuable, less valuable, or middle of the road?
Definitely more valuable. I think one of the biggest things that, um, we've seen is that the children are blending words and sounds together to make words much earlier than they were in any other program we've used. Um, it introduces it early and we were all kind of a little anxious about it, but they're getting it. And, and they are rising to the challenge. And if, one second, if I could just address Wayne. Um, our assessments are all given online, so at any given time, an administrator can log right in and see where we are. So that's great accountability.
So you talk about blending and for us, uh, for some laypeople out here in the audience, can we define what blending is?
So blending is putting sounds together to make and read words. So for instance, C-A-T. It just doesn't come to them. They have to know that, um, they have to put those sounds together and hear themselves say it and make a word. So we're doing that much earlier than we were in other programs and with a lot more, um, vowel sounds than before. We were, on, on H and M, the program we were using before, we stuck with A-T words, at words, cat, bat, fat, for a really long time. So anytime you gave them a new word, they always sounded it out as an at word. So now they're exposed to a lot more.
What is the parental feedback that you've received is, uh, more favorable?
The songs are driving us.
The songs are driving us crazy. That's all we hear. They want to sing the song. I have, out of 19 students, right now I have eight students that are using the online component at home. We met with Angela the other day. And she's going to speak with the public library and have them try to put the icon onto their desktop so that the kids can access it there as well. So, we get a lot of feedback. They're, they know the letters that the kids are working on. I actually have a parent in the audience tonight. And she was just saying before we came up that she's very impressed with her daughter sounding out words.
So, if I don't put you on the spot, it wouldn't be like me. It definitely would be out of character for me. Would you mind coming up just for a second? Just give us your name. And tell us a little bit about how you find the program at home and your child interacting with it.
Jennifer Porter. My daughter Samantha absolutely loves it. She comes home every day and she's sounding out the words. And if at nighttime we forget, "Mom, we didn't do my blending. We have to do it." And she's reading and comparing her to my son who's in second grade, she's blending so much faster. And she's, "Guess what character I have. Oh, I'm trying to sneak it from Aunt Tessie." But she's, I can see a huge difference. Huge difference.
I think there's no better testimony than that, than what we just heard from you. And certainly through the teachers and through the parental feedback. It's a very exciting program. And it looks like it's, you know, we always talk about as a board, early intervention, early intervention, and literacy. We need to continue that model. And we need to move that model forward through our earlier grades. And as they tend to trend upward, we need to offer the technology and the resources and whatever else we need to do to make sure that we get to the earliest part of intervention with literacy and going forward. So, that you will see a definite improvement in all aspects of a children's, of a child's education as they grow. The fundamental foundation is always through literacy. Any other board member want to be here? Jody?
They said they needed some assistance in having parents possibly sign up for the Super Kids online. Is there any way we can set something up? Maybe at a parent-teacher conferences have a table set up at the next one? Or even just designate a time after school?
Yes. Could you come up?
You know, open house is like the second or third night of the first or second week of school. And we have that first day with our children where we meet with the parents, talk to them about the program and, you know, math and reading. So, we were thinking, instead of us having open house with the parents, we could set up in the music assembly room to show them how to use the portals and how important they are to go over these things. It could be a little complicated for someone who isn't very technologically savvy. So, and the idea of putting it into the library is great for those parents that don't have Wi-Fi. There is a place where you could go. You know, maybe we could have open library here, you know, an hour a week or something, so the kids could come in into a computer room and do that. But we thought, we had talked about the open house. Instead of it being an open house, having the parents learn how to use the parent portal.
What about for this year to try to target the parents that you guys have this year? That's what I was thinking of now.
Well, we're gonna talk to them at great length at our conferences. Just explain to them the importance of, you know, we send blending cards home. And I had a child today say, "Well, I read the cards." And I'm like, and we sent letters home. And we did it saying, "It is important that you blend the words and not just read them." Because one of the Super Kids, the reason why they don't do the memorization is because one side of your brain is memory and one side of your brain is blending. And at this age, to do both is very confusing for them. And their thought process is, if they blend, when you get into high school and you don't know a word, well, if you haven't memorized it, you're still not going to know the word. But if you have blending skills, then you can possibly sound it out and get an idea. And if the word is familiar, that you've heard it, you'll be like, "Oh gee, that's what the word is." But if you have it all memorized, it doesn't work. And it's just too confusing when you're five years old to do memorization and blending.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Any other board member want to be heard on this matter? If not, I'd like to thank all of the staff for coming down. Thank you, Angela, as well. And thank you for your continued support and buy-in into the program. And without you, this job doesn't get done. And without you, our children do not get the educational foundation that they need. And certainly in all aspects of their lives. And you could take pride in knowing that you've certainly helped each and every child that you come in contact with. So, thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. All right, so we will now move right into, oh, we've got to call Angela Urbina-Mardina back up to the stand.
Yeah, more Angela.
Social Studies and Science Materials. You're on.
So, I was asked to provide you with an update on where we are in two content areas, social studies and science. Not two areas that we speak a tremendous amount because generally when we're having presentations about content, it's usually monopolized by ELA and math. But social studies and science is still taught in school. There have been some changes to social studies and science instruction and the standards themselves. You do not have a copy of these slides, but I did provide in your report an overview of what it is that I'm going to share here. So, in 2016, the New York State Science Standards were approved. And this school year, which is 2017-18, the rollout of the science standards has been broken into three phases. And we're in phase one. Phase one is called raising awareness, which simply means school districts are getting to know and get familiar with the science standards. Ulster BOSIS is offering workshops in January and February of this year on understanding, implementing, and unpacking the New York State Science Standards. Science hasn't changed. The same concepts that were taught when we were all in school are still being taught now. The change in science instruction and the change in social studies instruction, the changes are very similar. And I'll get to that in just a moment. The social studies standards, New York State's social studies standards, were updated in the spring of 2016. Grades nine through 12 updated in the winter of 2017. With emphasis being on a deeper understanding of key concepts. So, that students cover less material but have a greater understanding of it. Ulster BOSIS is offering workshops on understanding the new social studies standards. They have been offering workshops on the social studies standards for the last year or so. Several of our teachers have participated in unpacking and understanding the New York State Social Studies standards and will continue to do so. Science. The way that students are being asked to interact with science content has changed. So, when I was the middle school principal, we used Science 21 kits. There were kits that we purchased through a coser with Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIS. It was a box of random, it seemed like, objects. Tinfoil balls, styrofoam, pipe cleaners, all sorts of odd, seemingly odd items that together created an experience for students that was hands-on. What the New York State Science Standards will be, or what they are, and as they roll out, that same type of hands-on experience is to be taking place with students K-6. Students in seventh through 12th grade have those experiences because they participate in labs. But students in the primary grades had been interacting with science content in more textbook lecture format than is recommended. The New York State Standards, as they are currently written, encourage a different interaction with phenomena. So, that students are involved in STEM. So, they understand the connections between this particular process and this particular result. And that their, that understanding comes from not just reading it in a textbook, that the understanding comes from actually participating in it. So, it's not that science has changed. Science hasn't changed. How we're teaching science has changed. Last year, Ulster BOSIS offered an opportunity to school districts to participate in the use of some of these new kits that districts had the opportunity to contract. And that proposition was shared with districts on whether or not they were interested in doing it. That information was brought back here. There was no interest in participating in that particular endeavor, which involved coaching, embedded coaching, and use of these kits in a trial sort of basis. In the interim, we are in a place where other school districts are. We're using the same textbooks that we've used in previous years. Those items are absolutely still available and are still being utilized. But in addition to that, there is a lot more available to teachers in classrooms and students with regard to more engaging content via their Chromebook devices, via their smartboards, where you have access to content that is current, that students can see, that comes in a wide range of topics and also on different levels. So, just by a click or two, teachers are able to access clouds for their primary students and why it rains and provide their, the students with the same sort of experience on the higher levels, you know, complete with some sort of interactive game. We had a presentation at the faculty meeting on the second when we returned from the holiday break on a resource, a resource that was made available to the middle school teachers and students, which is an interactive game and resource library for science content and material. In addition to that, we still contract with Discovery Science Education, which is a coser through BOSIS, that also provides additional content via electronic means for science instruction. The rollout for the new science standards, because State Ed understands that this is a huge shift from the way that many districts have been operating, will be taking the next couple of years. And we're looking to BOSIS for support as we have with the other major initiatives of ELA and also in math. In the area of social studies, once again, the trend is away from textbooks. It's not that history has changed. It has not. It's how we access history. Virtual field trips and access to primary source documents. All of those items that are part of the social studies curriculum, which you had to really dig and do a lot of work to get access to, can be at your desktop and in your classroom in a matter of minutes. The textbooks still have tremendous amount of value. And there are people that prefer that as their key source and reference tool. But many other teachers and students prefer a different type of experience. The social studies standards are, have been updated. And as I mentioned, with science, the major shift has to do with how we are having students interact with the content. Less with greater depth, so that there is some transfer. The fact that our students in ELA spend 50% of their, 50% of what it is that they read should be nonfiction text, gives you that many more opportunities to have students engage in current events with regard to social studies or also with science. So, there is an opportunity, many opportunities during the course of the day for students to access science and social studies content. This past year, and the meeting in 2016 in January, a couple of our sixth-grade teachers were approved for the writing of social studies curriculum based on the new standards. I provided you with a copy of one of the units that was completed as an example of some of the great work that was done. And if you had the opportunity to peruse that, you would see that there was content and material pulled from a variety of different sources. So, I hope that this answered some of the questions. And if it has not, please feel free to ask any of that. There's still.
So, I will, I will thank you for your presentation. We'll get some questions from the board. I just want to add, I heard you say one thing that there was no interest in some kits or interactive materials and resources that were offered to the district. Where does that, what did you mean by that, no interest? Was it no interest from our administration? Or where was the lack of interest?
The opportunity was posed, and there was no interest in participation.
Questions from the board? John?
Yes, Angela, and thank you for your presentation. So, last board meeting, a couple of, well, at least one teacher came through, a social studies teacher, and talked about a lack of textbooks. I understand that the social studies standards are changed. We can, that they'll be changed again. But I have a real hard time with, as we talked about the kindergarten thing and how the teachers bought into that program, I also think it's important to understand that teachers that are in the classroom do the things that they do in a certain way. The, so I want to make a case for that teacher and the textbooks. You gave us this unit on Egypt, okay? There were 45 copies for one unit. So, if a teacher has 25 students for that unit of study, it's 1,125 pages that we're making copies of.
No. So, what you have is what, and I didn't mean to interrupt you. What you have is what the teacher would use. And they're embedded in there are worksheets and/or quizzes and assessments. And those would be the items that they would share with the students. So, not, not everything that you have in your possession would be a handout to a student.
Okay, so then I'll bypass the numbers. I was gonna go through over 10, 12, 14 units and a 30-year teacher making a half a million copies.
Right.
However, you said that the standards changed in 2016 and 17. The information that's in these packets dates starting in 2017, going 2009, 2003, 1998, and as far back as 92. It's 25 years ago. And I just believe that if the teacher feels that, and as I do, that a textbook is a good reference a lot of times for those students, why would the district just isn't offering textbooks? Even if we bought new textbooks every edition every five or six years, it would still be cheaper than the number of copies that we're running off. And so, I understand the standards have changed. But you did mention teacher preference. And I think that we should talk to the sixth-grade teachers and see if they want textbooks added as part of that curriculum where you bring as many opportunities for kids to learn as possible.
No one is discouraging the purchasing of textbooks. Textbooks and textbook replacements take place every year at budget season. And having been the middle school principal, I know that there were years where we had to purchase 25 replacement textbooks. And there were years when we only needed five.
We were told there were no textbooks.
Right. So I just want to make a comment about this.
That would be inaccurate.
So from my experience, is this, previously as a school business official and also as a superintendent, very often when a teacher wants to use a textbook, or they want to introduce a textbook or other materials, they introduce it. They go to their principal, there's a form for new textbook adoption, comes to the board, goes to the curriculum committee, and it comes forward. I don't know of a time where we've said, no, we're not going to buy materials or supplies. I want to be very clear about that. Because I don't know, well, let's just say, I don't know what the perception was from that whole conversation, but we don't deny materials and supplies. And we also, you know, we have professional staff here. We have great teachers. We just saw a group of teachers come up. And we want them to bring forward the materials. We want them to participate in professional development opportunities. And they do. And I don't want it to sound like they don't. They do. So if there's a particular textbook or material that they want to look at, that's great. I will tell you, there has been, in the county and in the state, hesitation to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in math textbooks and social studies textbooks and science textbooks, because in the last four or five years, we've seen things change incredibly. And we've even been told, specifically with math and other topics, hold off on your big purchases until we finalize the standards and we get to roll out the information to you. So I really take, you know, exception to the fact that we're trying to withhold materials. You know, every summer we offer curriculum writing opportunities. We've done it in the winter. If there's, you know, it's a two-way conversation here, and our teachers will advocate for what they want. If they want us a textbook, let's look at the textbook. I mean, no, no one's saying we're not going to buy textbooks.
I apologize if you took umbrage with that.
No, it wasn't you. It wasn't you, Mr. Burns.
I was just going on what the teacher told us.
Right.
So my question then is, do the sixth grade social studies teachers have textbooks?
Well, I, I don't know if they, they're saying they don't have textbooks, but we haven't, I haven't seen a request for a textbook they'd like to use. So if they'd like to bring us forward, and I, I had said this in, in meetings, if they'd like to bring us materials, if they'd like to see used, that are aligned to the new standards, we have no problem presenting them to the board in the next couple of weeks. We really don't.
Angela, you aware if the sixth grade teachers have social studies textbooks?
When I left the conversation last, when this curriculum was written, and the, in sixth grade, the situation is unique in that it's ELA slash social studies, ELA slash science. So out of the two periods in the day where they have ELA scheduled on alternating days and/or first semester or second semester, that second period is also inclusive of science...
When we left the conversation last, I left the conversation last.
I didn't touch it.
That was going to be the basis of what was going...
Angela, I'm going to just interrupt you and see if you can use, that, that microphone's not working anymore. They just wanted me to point that out.
Here?
Yep.
Can I just go to my seat?
That would be, okay. Okay. All right. Stay here.
Please.
That, that was going to be the basis of what was going to be used in the classroom, but there was no, nothing was communicated to me that there were no textbooks. And I haven't had any requests for textbooks. Nothing has come to me via the middle school principal either.
I'm not, I'm not being oppositional.
No, nor am I.
I'm just saying, just like, just like I want to support the K-2 teachers for what they want, if, if teachers feel they need a textbook, I just want to make sure they have textbooks.
And this is, and this is the time for them to put in their requests and, and move forward here.
Thank you.
So could I ask you, superintendent, in an interest of, of making sure that, because it, it is perceived here somehow that the communication has failed somewhere, it's lacking in, in its content or translation, and therefore I'd like you to meet with Mr. Spinelli and the sixth grade teaching staff and to find out where this is going or where it's been, and why they feel that they do not have the proper resources to teach the program. So I would ask you to do that.
Sure.
Thank you. Wayne?
So if I could briefly, to get off of the textbooks, because you mentioned Chromebooks up there as well. So my daughter happens to be in sixth grade, and maybe this is something for Mr. Napoli, I'm not sure, but there seems to be not enough Chromebooks for the grade. I thought we had this discussion and that was taken care of, but she's sharing Chromebooks in that classroom, and I just thought that we were past that.
First I'm hearing of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it.
If you could check into that, please, because...
We sure will.
Thank you.
I, I know that there was a bit of an uptick in enrollment in sixth grade, so I'm, I'm not sure, so I don't know. I, I don't have the answer.
Reverend Collins?
I think that as we talk about textbooks, I think most of us can testify to the fact that the problem with textbook, especially in some classes, science, social studies, is aging. They age out quickly. You end up teaching more history than you are today. That's part of the problem that I see as far as textbooks are concerned. The curricular that, that comes, like the folder that's in our, in our book, brings social studies or science up to date. It's a matter of keeping up until somebody writes one that will last for three, I'll say no more than five years, are they going to stay standard? Because by then, they're outdated. And if you think about your time in school, my time in school, and the way it goes, that's the problem with some textbooks in some classes. Even in, in math, as you look at math, math changed. So there comes the times of where somebody's got to write the book, put the book out, and then the way things have been happening is changing as we talk. So I, it's a struggle. I realize we need books, but I know that it's a struggle trying to keep up to date because they change almost as fast as you, by the time you read one, determine that's the one you want, and get it, it's already aged out if you're not careful. So I, I understand sometimes the copying that we're talking about is more up to date and easier than trying to update an old book.
Let's see, and that's exactly why I want them to have a conversation, because I think that if they sit down and talk, you'll see that, just what you were saying, Reverend Collins, that perhaps the communication of what they need and what the resources are can all be ironed out between a legitimate conversation between all the parties affected here. And I think that's what we need to do, is have that conversation.
Sure.
So that we can work that out. I know that in, you know, in, it's funny, in college, and it wasn't that long ago, I went back and, you know, one semester I get a book, and then the, the next semester I go back, I have to spend another $120 on a, on a book that they, that they just had outdated, so. But whatever the tools and resources are that our teachers feel they need to get the job done, let's have that conversation, let's get them what they need, or let's find out where we can go to get there.
Okay.
Phil, it would, it would help if, if maybe the governor's watching us, if they would stop updating the standards every six months.
That might, that might be a big help.
And give us the right time and resources to...
Yeah, some more financial aid as well. Thank you. Any other board member want to be heard on this issue? If not, I'd like to thank Angela for her presentations tonight. I know we called upon you a lot, but thank you. They were informative. All right, we will move right along here, and we go on to reports, information, and correspondences. I'd just like to say that I'm working right now with my other hat, is Police Chief, along with the building principals, and bringing a presentation to the school district on March 1st, which I hope you all mark your calendars for. Chris Haren, who's a former NBA star, also number one college draft pick, played for very, I think it was Boston College or Notre Dame, one or the other. But I watched his presentation, I was invited by the, just to give you a little background, it's a presentation on opiate addiction. He gives a wonderful presentation. He was actually a victim of opiate addiction that affected his life as a pro basketball player and really cost him a, a lot. And he put on a very powerful presentation last year that I went to see in the city of Kingston. I was invited by the Kelder family, who have, who have started a foundation known as Ryan, and they have a Superman logo, but it's an R in the middle instead of an S for their son, Ryan Kelder. Ryan Kelder was in rehab up here at Renaissance. He got out last, actually two years, two years ago in August, and two days later, he was found deceased on Backman Avenue as a result of a heroin overdose. Ever since then, the Kelder family has really reached out and really ran the cause of trying to make people aware of how really pandemic and, and I would say, venture to say epidemic, this program has become in our society. The abuse of opiate pills that leads to, you know, you had this vacuum effect. Opiates were widely available, prescriptions were widely available by doctors for years for pain, because you can't tell a person that they're not feeling pain. What occurred was a two-pronged effect. They became so rampant that opiates are addictive, highly addictive, matter of fact, relatively quickly. And then what happened was the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration, along with doctors, realized there, you know, there's an abuse, a little bit too much, too little, too late. That leads to cutting, putting stringent requirements on the issuance of these painkillers. So where do they go? Where do opiate, you know, people that are addicted to opiates go? Well, you know, oxycodones and hydrocodones and, and things of that nature are the same chemical makeup that's found in heroin. So they turn to heroin. It's cheaper, it's readily available, unfortunately, and people go to heroin and they abuse heroin. What happens is, there is an inherent nature of not to realize that this heroin is being cut with other chemicals, such as fentanyl, which is a peril, powerful narcotic that leads to cardiac arrest and affects the central nervous system and stops breathing, stops your breathing. And if you're not given Narcan or Naloxone in a matter of minutes, you will be, you will die as a result of that. So this, Chris Haren has, you know, reached out and done presentations all over. He was actually a person who got a sports injury, that got addicted to opiates, to the extent that he spent millions of dollars and wasted a really gifted professional and athletic career and also cost him a lot until he got it back. And I encourage all of you to come see it on March 1st here at the school. It will be presented by the, and they'll also be doing a, a assembly during the day to the, I believe, six, six through 12, or nine through 12? I think it's nine through 12.
Nine, maybe eight.
Yeah. Might be eight through 12 or nine through 12, they're going to be doing a presentation to the children as well. He'll be signing autographs as well, and you'll see his story, he does a really powerful presentation. But, so that's all I have for this evening. Board membership? Anybody? No? I just have, oh, excuse me, one more thing. Hall of Fame Committee report, John has, John Burns has submitted, and the committee has submitted their final report to all of you in regards to the establishment of the Hall of Fame Committee. Want to thank the committee for their hard work on this. I just have one question, John, that I asked earlier about the, the two Hall of Fame members. Has that been struck off that, or?
All right. So what happened was, the committee met again, and I'm not going to go through everything because there's a time frame in this that I'll, that I'll mention. But one of the things that we did was, we looked at four or five, six Hall of Fames and their documentation, and we took the best parts, what we felt were the best parts of each of those. And so on several of them, what they did is they actually had Hall of Fame members as a member of the committee. Since we're just starting, we won't have Hall of Fame members. So what we did was, to keep the number, an odd number on a committee you want for voting purposes, we increased the community members, I believe, from three to five. So what will happen is when we start the committee, we'll actually have seven members, the committee members and the two coaches in the district. And then as we go on, the Hall of Fame members that want to join or that are asked to join will, will be on there, and you'll have a total of nine. So that was pretty much it. We, we finalized all of the nomination process, the eligibility and criteria, how many people can go on and under what topics. And then, as you notice under the yearly timeline, the nomination forms are available in January. So since we're in January, we need to get that going because the nomination deadline will be in April, and then in May, the vote would take place. And at our homecoming football game next year, we'd like to induct the inaugural class. So having said that, I don't know if we can entertain a motion to accept this, since everybody's had an opportunity to look forward to it, but, look through it, but we need to get moving to get the information out.
So we, you know, I had some questions that I was giving some answers to, and that is that you don't need a motion to this. What we're going to do, since the committee was charged with formulating this, is we actually have to have a Hall of Fame Committee by virtue of the process of what you've established through the committee's work. So the committee has done that work, and we will now go through the process that the committee has established in establishing that Hall of Fame Committee. And that will be done through the policy of the school district, which will be to, which will be to, you know, as you, as, as is said here in the, in the rules, and that is to go through the volunteering process and, you know, as far as those members that are going to be volunteers, they have to go through the volunteer process of the policies that's been established by the district. So we will disband the committee that has established this, and we will send it back for the Hall of Fame Committee to be established by virtue of the work that you've put into this. And really thank you for that.
Two things. One, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure if the current coaches would have to apply through the volunteer process.
No.
Since they're already employees.
Right.
The second thing is, I was wondering if it would be helpful if we reached out in some way to get it started with the athletic director and the two coaches.
Yes.
And I would be willing to do that if it's okay with you. Because we're going to need to get it started somehow. Just advertising it, I don't know if that's adequate.
No, that, that would be fine if you want to, you know, go out and assist the...
I could talk to Kermit and...
Yeah, I mean, and get this established, but we're going to have the, have you guys go and get this established, get it out to the community, have people apply for it.
I'll have...
And those, those volunteers will go through the process. Obviously, the two staff members do not have to go through that.
Right.
But the, the other community members must go through that as part of our, our policy. So if we can get that out, you know, as soon as possible, so that we can get this moving. And once that committee is formed, that committee will be charged with making sure that these, you know, obviously they'll go through and make sure that all the bylaws and everything that they want in that committee, and then bring it back, bring it back to the, to the board. But as long as it's, you know, established and running, we will have them go, and they'll be charged with establishing, again, and reviewing all this and seeing if this is where they want to go as, as a committee of the Hall of Fame. And then they'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, if you want to work with, go through Superintendent Wiles and work with the Athletic Director, and let's get this moving.
Thank you.
And bring this back to the board. And I wanted, at this time, I'll disband this committee. Thank you for your work that you put in. Jody?
Iris, Wayne, and Mr. Burns, thank you for chairing it. And this, this committee is now disbanded. Thank you. Are any other board members? Want to be heard this evening? No? Student representative is not here. Do we have a report?
I do have a report. So they apologize for not being able to make it tonight. There's two parts of their report. The first one has to do with sports. The varsity track has a meet on Friday in Suffren. The varsity boys' basketball and JV will be playing Dover tonight away. The varsity girls' basketball team and JV will be playing Dover at home. But I think, if I heard correctly, that JV was canceled and that just the varsity played at 4:30, I believe. There's a community lacrosse team that's picking up momentum and attention with a clinic on the 7th. I know one of our teachers is working in the community with that. There'll be three more sessions in the Rondell High School gym on January 14th, 21st, and 28th for boys and girls, grades K through eight. There's a $10 fee for the sessions, all of them are included in the $10. So it's $10 for all the sessions. And you can speak to Mr. Espinoza and the high school for more information. General items, students in the elementary schools, student council, spent some time in the village and put hats, gloves, and scarves all throughout the town, and I think it was reported in the journal. They did a really nice job. People could go and pick up hats and gloves and scarves. It was a great, great project that they did.
It was a great project, and unfortunately, we are working on a case with that. It appears that somebody has stolen those items from Liberty Square, and we do have a current suspect in connection with that matter, so further to come.
Well, it's a great, great initiative, and I'm really proud of our students for doing that. And then there was some follow-up in our high school, where they put up the same type of presentation in, I believe, the high school lobby. So there was something put out where you could pick up mittens or gloves or scarves or hats. And that's been great in the high school, and people are really taking advantage of it. And this note is from our reps. They say everyone is snow crazy, or there's a snow craze. Key Club is hosting a hat, glove, and scarf drive. High school students with perfect attendance attended a pizza party to congratulate, for congratulations. And honor students went to an ice cream social the week before that, and they apologized for not being able to be here tonight.
So with that being said, I think it's very important that we recognize the, the students with no absences in the high school. I think that's a tremendous feat and not to be absent, so I'd like to see this board recognize those, those students at a, at a later meeting.
Okay.
That's important. Superintendent Wiles? Superintendent Wiles, do you have anything this evening?
Just two things. The budget workshops are coming up. They'll start on January 30th. We haven't gotten any information yet about what the state aid runs look like. We hope by then we'll have them. And just as a point of information, we'll make sure we get this up on the website. There's always a question about snow days. We've used three of a total of 10 that we have. So we have seven more, you know, to go. So that's a jinx, it's informational, informational. I'm not burning a hole in my pocket, gee, Mr. Matrician. We have a long way to go yet this, this winter, that's all I have.
So just one thing else to add. I know that Superintendent Wiles and has established a communication to send back to Judge Longstein in response to his inquiries earlier last year in regards to establishing a, another bus run during faculty meeting days for those, those fall sports.
Mr. Napoli sent it on our behalf, so thank you.
Mr. Napoli, anything for this evening?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Bean, I think we've heard enough of you, but do you have any? Done? You're done. Thank you very much. There are no discussion items, so we'll move on to the resolutions for this evening. And we will start with personnel. 8.1.1, that Anna Brenneck, who holds a professional New York State certification in Students with Disabilities, grade 712, be appointed to a four-year probationary position of Special Education Teacher and in a tenure area of Special Education effective February 12, 2018 through February 12, 2022 at a contractual rate of $77,949. Step seven, bachelor's, 43-plus masters. Be a further resolved that to the extent except of applicable under educational law, Section 3012-d and the accompanying commissioner's regulations, in order to be considered for tenure, Anna Brenneck must have received an APPR rating of effective or highly effective in three of the four probationary years and must not receive an ineffective in the final year.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. That Jennifer Porter, name sounds familiar, be appointed substitute clerical at a rate of $95 per day work, substitute teacher rate at a rate of $70, $70 per day work and substitute cafeteria monitor at a rate of $11 per hour work for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second. Congratulations, Jennifer. Little premature, but we'll get the vote. Any discussion? All those in favor? Now I say congratulations. 8.1.3, that Walter Gangga and Michael DePue, mailroom, be appointed substitute cleaners at a rate of $13.50 per hour work for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, is Michael DePue a familiar name to this district?
He is a retired, past SRP member. I believe last year he retired.
Excellent.
Yes.
And we welcome him back.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. That Chris Mason be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of $95 per day work for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Second.
There was a move and a second, yeah, and a third. I think Wayne's third. We'll take Wayne's third. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.5, that the co-curricular personnel listed forth on the list below be approved at the contractual rate listed for the 2017-18 school year. And that's deal at timekeeper, substitute, chaperone substitute, $62 per game, $43 per game.
Move the list as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. That the following clubs be created and approved. High school chemistry club, middle school gay, straight and alliance club.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Five? All those opposed? Three? Motion carries, five to three. 8.1.7, that the following high school extended day program personnel listed below be approved at a rate of $42 per hour work, two hours daily, two days per week for the 2017-18 school year. It's AIS English as a new language, E N L Carl Beauty.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I did.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Following individuals be approved to work on the wellness committee after school for the 2017-18 school year, not to exceed 10 hours work that the rate indicated below.
Move the list as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. That the appointment of Caitlin Hall, senior typist, be made permanent following successful probationary period of six months effective January 24th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.10, that the appointment of Caitlin Osterhout, clerk typist, be made permanent following successful probationary period, six months, effective January 26th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.11, that the appointment of Sabrina Decker, senior typist, be made permanent following successful probationary period of six months, effective January 26th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.2, that the probationary appointment of Gabriella McCombs be extended for an additional six months with a new probationary expiration date, June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. That ends personnel. We will now go on to 8.2 policy.
Motion to move 8.21 to 8.23?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Nothing under budget, nothing under legal, under education, 8.5.
Motion to move 8.51 and 8.52?
Second.
Been moved and seconded under education. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under construction.
Motion move 8.61 to 8.72, or 8.62.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Is there any discussion under construction?
Mr. President, I do have a question. Under 8.6 as a whole, do we still have construction activity ongoing in the buildings? And is this change order and the subsequent billing connected to the construction ongoing currently?
It is not.
It's, this, these are past, these are past phase change orders and bills.
Correct.
At what point will our construction manager clean up completely the past phase so that we can start the phase fresh? Do we know?
Are you referring to billing? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, the, the, the construction ended around September and we're in January and we're still cleaning up change orders connected to the construction.
Right, so the change order and the billing process, there is a process. It goes, as you know, through the construction company, through the construction manager, through the architect and then it comes down to me for payment. It's all when they get their payment apps in. So it's really contingent upon that, the change order paperwork. We were still having discussions during our job meetings, finalizing the actual numbers as to how much the amount of the change order was for. And those will be coming through if there are any left. So I hope to have it all cleaned up soon. Right now, the work that's being done is electrical and HVAC, plumbing. And then we'll start up again in June.
Right, understood. So can we, can we get a, an estimated date of when the construction manager expects to have all of the previous phase construction costs, complete change orders written and buildings complete?
I can try, but some of those numbers are contingent upon the companies actually putting forth the paperwork for the billing.
We'll have them push it.
Okay, please have them set a deadline. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Are there any further discussion on the motions? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Other? 8.7.1, resolve that the mileage rate be set.
Motion move 8.71, 8.72?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on either of these items? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Next meeting is January 23rd. Same time, same place. Is there anything that anybody would like on the next agenda? John?
I apologize, but the size of the package this week makes me want to ask, do we have a board docs training scheduled yet?
Did we, I know we got dates. We just received dates from the trainer and we'll be polling the board to make sure we can, in case you don't know them off the top of your head, do you? So we'll, we'll poll the board tomorrow or Thursday.
Thank you. The other thing was when we talked about the boost program last time, Angela, I think you weren't here in the last meeting. We, we talked about the fact that the, the students would most likely come back into the new school year energized, engaged. And what I asked in the last meeting was, is it possible, I think it was 58 students in that?
Yes.
Okay.[1770.66]